Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northampton Planning Board Meeting of June 13, 2024. We're here at City Council, and we also have a hybrid function via Zoom with a number of participants there. The presenters for the applications are here in person. We have two items on the agenda, one for a site plan review Village Hill at you can find my 120 Moser Street, and a second one, a site plan and special permit at Eightview Avenue. And then the board, after those applications are closed, the board is going to discuss some of our protocols that we've started talking about a couple of meetings ago regarding the hybrid meeting format. And we might even have some other administrative things at the very end of the, such as minutes. But is there a there is an A and R at Northern Avenue and minutes? So prior to opening up the applications and the official agenda, we traditionally ask people if they'd like to make any public comment, not related to the two items, the two or three items on the agenda, but other items that you're concerned about with the city of Northampton. So we'll start here with Council Chambers. Is there anyone here who would like to speak publicly about items they're concerned about, not to do with Moser or View Avenue? Okay, and as we're still in our, our format of for hybrid participants on Zoom, we are still taking their comments just by chat at this point. And the staff, Carolyn, Miss, or myself will read those aloud. And I don't, so is there's anyone in Zoom who would like to comment about an item not on the agenda? Please take a moment and put that into the chat. Okay. All right, seeing none, then we'll move right into our agenda items. We're going to begin with a site plan amendment by Jay Brianis. For addition to a home at 120 Moser Street, map ID 31C dash 28, permit LU dash 24 dash 19. And the applicant's here.
I think I have a simple straightforward presentation that you can hopefully see. What we're doing, I think what I'm looking for is a permanent amendment.
Yeah. You might need to talk so your face in the mic there, Mr. Brianis.
Can I move the mic? Am I okay?
Yep.
Okay, so this is Village Hill, so this is, I guess, some special zoning and permitting up there. And so when we applied for building permit a couple of months ago, two months ago, it was, we assumed it would be approved, moved quickly, but then had to go to zoning, there was some confusion at zoning. And we think the confusion was that this was the as planned projection, there was a house, a garage, and I guess a work limit line of some sort, which I'm not sure what it is exactly, but that's the line. It went past what was a expected deck, I guess, up here. What we actually built, what Mr. Peacock built that we bought from him was this house, which did not have a garage and moved the back out, an extra room on the first floor, and they needed two cars in the alley in the driveway, so this cat was pushed back. So apparently it was pushed back beyond the work line, and then this is our basement walkout from below. So the property really ends here. Where there was a deck here that was poorly built and we took it down and we're replacing it with a screen porch. So we are within the perimeter footprint of what we bought, but it deviates from what was presented through planning. And the planning process, as I understand it, the road is there and it's sort of like a cookie cutter house, put it along the line. So what was actually built was changed person by person who was buying the property, they modified it, they asked for this, they asked for that. I don't believe Mr. Peacock ever submitted as built to the city, maybe. And so what happened was the city was using this to look at our request when in fact we have this. So the simple request we have is to allow us to build the deck within our footprint that exists really right now. So that's, that's the request. The house next to us on the side comes back the same setback, but yet on the plan was also technical ones. So in that, made a form in the neighborhood, we're continuing to use the same siding and same everything for the house. So, so we're conforming to the Village Hill kind of palette, so to speak. Anyway, that's basically the issue.
What's the point of the garage thing that you have?
This? This one?
Yeah.
Yes, well, that's what was original.
Okay.
So when the, when the plant site plans were to say that, they said, here's the house, here's the garage, and they were all there. We didn't build a garage. We in fact asked Mr. Peacock for this. I don't know where certificate of occupancies were done, and I'm not sure how that happened, but, but the plan, the house that we bought was different than the house that was on the planning. We did not realize that, I guess, when we bought the, the house, so.
Great question from the board. So this is an amendment to the site plan. Is it, is it a site plan just for that series of buildings on Moser Street, or it's the whole campus?
So this is a site plan for that amendment from that Moser Street loop.
Yep.
But just as it relates to this parcel, because we don't have the data about, I mean, some of the houses were built within the work limit line, others were not. But the only way we'll probably know specifically is as people come in over time to amend. And so it, or if, if there's still space between the existing house and the work limit line, then they wouldn't have to do that. But this particular application is just about this lot. So the it was to show sort of the building envelope initially, so there are no setbacks in the planned village zone. So the idea was an applicant would come in to, to develop a, you know, quadrant of the state hospital and show what made sense for that quadrant, then maybe the setbacks would be five feet or 10 feet. But that the board essentially granted approval, sort of within this building envelope, you can put your structure. And it was to ensure that there was enough leftover land and also understand how much would be undeveloped and left for landscaping. The other thing about this particular section of that Moser Street quadrant is that on this particular line of Moser Street is on the farthest west of that state hospital redevelopment. And there were some significant mature trees where it was really important to make sure the work limit didn't come close enough to disrupt the root zone there. And so this lot in particular doesn't have one of those significant trees at the back, so. But there are some lots further south of this one where those trees were intended to remain. And so it was important to make sure that limit line was far enough away to protect it.
There's also just 10, 20 feet from the project, there's a severe drop off down into the contravention area, as we call the. So one of my questions is, and I think maybe it was raised in the staff notes, is about now that we're adding that larger roof on there, how that's going to impact the runoff, the rainwater runoff, and does it impact the, any kind of storm water situation that was inherent in the existing house before? I don't know if you're
So what I can respond to on that level is the entire area that we're building, the screen porch is elevated, so it's all stone and dirt below, so we're not asphalting or, or, you know, enclosing any permeable land. And the roof will actually have a gutter and, and fit into our storm runoff, which has a storm pit or whatever it's called in the back. They, they built the drainage stone filled.
Dry well, yep.
So our water will actually go to that, it won't go, it'll be removing water, actually, it would have gone to the ground. Because before we had the roof, everything went to the ground.
Yeah.
There'll be less water, actually, running off the surface.
And there's no open space calculations up there at the planned village either, so adding that roof doesn't kind of detract from those open space calculations. Other questions? So we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here in City Council who'd like to speak to this application, either in support or an opposition to it? All right, hearing now, we'll turn to our friends in the online. Is there anyone there who would like to enter a chat with a comment about this application? All right, seeing none. Did you say anything, Carolyn?
I did.
I have the same view as you. Nope. All right.
I moved to close the public comment.
Second. Motion's been made to close the public comment. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, unanimous, nobody opposed, okay. Pretty straightforward.
The only thing I'd like to, I, I move this, thank you. I would move to support this. I just would want something that would designate the fact that this can't later be added, simply added into the envelope of the actual home without coming back in front of the, the planning board.
But aren't we doing that if we accept the amendment?
No, it's a screened in front porch. It's completely different than, it's not part of the envelope of the house.
What, why, why can't they, I mean, can't you build an addition on your house? Why is that, needs to come to planning board?
Well, first of all, because you don't, that's not how you build an addition onto a thing.
Well, that's a building code issue, but I mean.
Structurally do that, and and the question is, would we, would we say, would we support this if it was not just a screen in front porch? I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just a, it's an addition. None of us do it as a, not adding a room to the house.
Just to clarify, it's on the rear of the house? That's not the front, so. A rear screened porch?
Yes, a rear screened porch versus an actual, an actual conditioned insulated room.
So yeah, I mean, I think you would just discuss that, I mean, the, from a review perspective, we look at the footprint and an extension of essentially, no, it's not extending the foundation, but it's an extension of the usable space and the built space. So you're, you would be essentially approving, you're also sort of approving that thanks, the alternate room there that's built beyond the work limit line that's already there. So you're sort of approving the whole thing, and that's enclosed living space. So I think if the board, I think it should, you know, you could certainly have that conversation about what you think you're allowing in terms of an expansion. But certainly from a building code perspective, yes, a porch on piers, obviously, to turn it into a conditioned space would have to be rebuilt to meet the building code for that. But if there was, if it was silent on that piece, I mean, I think you'd want to look at what would be the difference of having an extra room on a house in terms of the impact to the overall state hospital redevelopment and the housing up there, right? If that were to come in for enclosing, you know, later for a living conditioned space, the building department would look at that and say, well, they're already built there, so they're just really enclosing it.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So they, that wouldn't necessarily in and of itself trigger a need to come back, because the board would have already approved the work limit line. So if there's an issue for the board to say it makes a difference whether it's conditioned or not conditioned, then, you know, definitely you'd want to clarify that, because that wouldn't be obvious to the building department, yeah.
Issue here is just that it's crossing the work limit line, as built situation. I mean, we're not, we don't typically review additions in the state hospital area, just because the people want an addition.
Right, right.
And, and are we setting any precedent? I mean, we're not changing the work limit line at this point. We're allowing a kind of a waiver and amendment to it. But currently, all those other houses on Moser Street still have that work limit line, correct?
Right, and at some point, there's going to be a threshold beyond which the stormwater management permit that was issued, the more impervious surface that's built, there might need to be a recalculation by the HOA, the association. They're responsible for maintaining the stormwater system, so we haven't gotten to that point yet, but that's, you know, that's what makes this, you know, different than other situations.
Hey, any other questions for the applicant or staff? Okay, and I don't think
We already closed this, didn't we?
We closed that, thank you. We closed the public comment, yeah. So we can't, so, Mr. Brian, as you're all set, you could, we're gonna kind of deliberate and come to a motion at some point. Thank you.
I, I don't have a, I wasn't trying to start something, a discussion about it, it's more about the fact that I moved to support the
Yep. Yeah, I think a vote for this means that it could be enclosed in the future. Okay.
Right.
Realize that.
There it is.
Voting.
Yeah.
All right, is there motion from the board for this application at 120 Moser Street?
I've, I moved to support the the addition of a screen in front porch on was it 20?
Okay, 120 Moser.
120 Moser Street.
Motion's been made for the, to approve the site plan amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by David Whitehill. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? We're all there again, okay. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Our next application hearing is set for 7:20.
I want it at 7:20.
We're right there. What an efficient, an efficient crew.
Were you stalling for that, Jordan?
Oh, okay. Sometimes
Did you miss this fun?
Actually, too. Chambers, yes, it looks like it.
Are you standing on us?
Fingers crossed.
Somehow we all missed the memo, though.
All right, at this point, we'll open
At this point, we'll open up a public hearing for a site plan and special permit by sovereign builders for development of 12 units on a parcel at Eightview Street, map ID 25C, that's 12 slash 17, permit LU 24 dash 11. And again, we're here in City Council Chambers with a number of the public, and we're also online in a hybrid setting. And those people online, if they want to comment during public comment, they'll need to, they'll need to put their comments into the chat.
Yep.
Function. We did have a request from one person who needed an accommodation, wasn't able to come to City Council Chambers, and after discussing this with staff and our ADA coordinator here at City Hall, we will allow that person to speak for approximately two minutes during the comment period, and even though that person's on, online. So that's an exception we're making for tonight's hearing. As we mentioned later on, after the, this hearing is closed, we will talk about some other protocols that we're putting in place for these hybrid meetings.
I'm going to have to read the number for you.
The nerve of it. Mm-hmm, to your point.
Technical difficulties, please stand by.
You are a taker?
Yeah.
995. 8703. 7174. Wait, that doesn't look like 995.
995.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, pass, 12860.
Sounds of city life. Hey, you know what? It's cool in here for 85 degrees. The AC is working. Bear with me here. Thanks for your patience, folks. We're just chewing up our presentation.
Are you there?
Yeah, there's, yes.
Okay.
This is a separate window.
Okay.
It's locked up, that can be closed.
I know. Okay, now stay muted. Yeah, that's what I want you to do.
Perfect. Woo-hoo, okay, are we there? Here. Perfect. Um, ready?
Ready.
Okay. Jeff Squire from the Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of Todd Soler and Sovereign Builders. And then with us also virtually, because he couldn't be here tonight, is Charles Roberts from Kuhn Riddle Architects, who's also been working on the project and will share some comments about the architectural component of the project. This
So Jeff, sorry, we're not going to allow that, right?
So I contacted him, he knows that he can't present.
Ah, okay.
They'll have to type his comments in the chat.
Okay. Um, so I'm not prepared to talk too much about the architecture, and we'll just have to figure this out.
But it appears a bunch of the stormwater stuff, something hasn't been
well, talk about that, okay. So this project is on Eightview Avenue, just to make everybody familiar. It really comprises two parcels, 25C 12 and 25C 17. There's some other land that's associated with, you know, the project, but some of it is being sold off through an A and R and has been developed through different means. So what we're looking at generally is, is what you see highlighted here, which is about five and a quarter acres with a private drive that extends off of North, North Street. And then it does extend up to a small finger in the north end of the parcel on Northern Ave, the western end of Northern Ave. And then the western edge of the property, it butts the rail trail, the bike path, and then private property on the, sort of the southwest and southern edges. As you all may know, this is a project or property that, at least from Berkshire's standpoint, we've looked at for a number of developers. We've done a number of schemes on this. This property is unique in that it's, you know, nestled in, in the URB zoning district, close to downtown, with access to a lot of the you know, major thoroughfares, vehicle and pedestrian, bike and otherwise. There's a substantial amount of wetlands on the property. The rear western portion of the property is primarily bordering vegetated wetland. There's also, you can see sort of highlighted in this heavy blue line, 200 foot riverfront area associated with stream that comes through from the west side and is culverted underneath the bike path, and then continues to spill out into this, into this larger wetland. So really, the area that we're, you know, looking at is this eastern portion of the site. It's maybe a third of the overall land area, maybe a little bit more. It currently contains a single family home of about 1,500 square feet. There's a small shed in the backyard and is primarily just mown, mown lawn that slopes down to a number of mature tree plantings, some stone wall remnants along the edge of the, edge of the wetland. We are seeking a special permit approval for 12 new single-family efficiency units under section 35010 and 35011. It also includes this private drive that is View Ave. This is for 12, 12 new efficiency units, which I'll describe in a little bit more detail in a moment, but this is just some images of the existing site. So this is looking down View Ave. This is the single family home that exists on the site now. This is the back of the building to the right, upper right here in the shed, you can see in the background. And then looking around the site through sort of the forested woodlands and wetlands in the back, the mown lawn, you can see up to the, there's a number of large, mature Norway spruces on the site. And that's what you can see, that's what all these evergreens that you can see in the, in the background are. Some views of the wetland area, and then there's an existing trail system on the northern edge of the property, which we'll talk about later. As I noted, the proposal is for 12 new efficiency units on eastern portion of the site. It includes an improvement to what is View Ave now, and then it branches off into two, two dead end roads essentially with a small parking area, which accommodates 15 cars. There's provision for emergency vehicle turnaround in this space here. But all these units back up against that, the, the wetland area, respecting the 35 foot no disturb limit in this, in this zoning district. Obviously, the majority of this site is either within 100 foot buffer zone or riverfront. And, you know, understandably, we can't avoid all impacts to, to buffer zone, but we are respecting certainly the 35 no disturb and any disturbance within the riverfront area. So these are 12 new units. There's nine units. These small units are 768 square feet. There's nine of those, and then there's three of these larger units, which include a roughly 250 square foot carport, which is really the additional square footage. Those are just over 1,300 square feet. These are all electric. They will be, they've got, and been designed with the appropriate HERS rating based on, you know, zoning requirements for these, the style of unit, type of unit. As I noted, we've got, we've got 15 parking spaces. There are three additional spaces within these carports conceivably. So there's parking for 18 total conceivably with compact cars. You could fit another space in these, in these driveways for the larger units, but we've, we've said that there's parking for 18 legitimately. There are two covered bike storage sheds. There's one at this intersection here, and then further back on the site in this location. These are covered bike sheds that each can accommodate easily three, four bike racks, so eight, eight bikes total comfortably in each of these, each of these structures. Taking you through some of the other details of the site, stormwater and drainage, understandably, is a, is a pretty big concern out here, given the high groundwater table and the proximity of wetlands. We've maintained essentially the same surface area that is draining to the east off of View Ave. The remainder of the site from roughly this high point here, we branch off into two different drainage areas, one for this, this lower southern parking lot, which is collected through a series of treatment chambers and infiltration galleys. And then to the north, similarly, we are draining to a catch base in the stormwater collection system here, which is a much larger system due to a little bit higher elevation and depth to groundwater. So we have the ability to provide some additional underground storage in this location. The roof water is all being picked up via a series of subsurface pipes that all tie to these same systems. We are also including Um, we are also including, um, a series of subdrains just in in recognition of the need to, uh, ensure that that, you know, ground flows and stormwater continues to do, um, closely what it's doing now through the site, um, presuming it's it's moving east to west. So there's a series of subdrains, uh, around the pavement structure, uh, both on the outside eastern edge and then along the inside, uh, sidewalk edge, um, to help direct, um, any ground flows that might be moving through, um, and get them through the site. So, you know, we don't create a, uh, an impingement to to that, um, process. Um, there's a small outdoor community space as required by zoning. Um, this is really, um, you know, a glorified fire pit area. It's it's intended to be, um, you know, very low impact. It's it's a small firing with some seating available around it, um, Adirondack chairs, that type of thing, um, with a gravel, uh, compacted gravel pad. Um, we're not anticipating that this is going to be this large pavilion, you know, um, concert structure. This is really just a place for the residents to to gather and have a, um, you know, small, small, um, you know, outdoor activity or something during the the nicer weather. Um, utility-wise, uh, other utilities, water, we are, um, we've been in discussion with the D P W. There's an existing four-inch line that extends up, um, U Avenue now, um, that was, um, uh, connected to a new eight-inch service that was stubbed out by the city several years ago. So, um, we are proposing to, um, abandon essentially that that four-inch line, replace it with a new eight-inch line to service the site. Um, all the existing services will be connected to that new, uh, new eight-inch line per D P W request, and then that will continue into the site to service the new units. Um, there's various hydrants, um, as as needed and required for, um, for flushing and, uh, fire expression needs. Uh, similarly sanitary, uh, there is an existing line in View Ave that goes to, uh, a certain point. Um, we've agreed to, you know, video that that line and ensure it is, um, in good, uh, good condition, good working order. Um, essentially, these new units will connect via a gravity system to a a single ejector pump, which will then connect, um, which will then, you know, via force main, connect to, uh, a new structure that goes to that gravity service. Um, provided that's in decent condition. If it's not, um, you know, we've we've obviously got got the ability to replace that or work with the D P W to do what's needed, um, to accommodate that. But, um, that's sanitary, um, lighting, um, yeah, I think it just in recognition of the location and the, you know, really the desire to, um, not provide any more lighting than is really necessary to safely get people, um, through the site, um, and, um, you know, get to their parking areas and to their to their front doors safely. Um, there's four, uh, there's four single, uh, site poles. This is, uh, just an image that's similar to, um, what we're proposing, but these are all, um, compliant with city regulations, uh, both in terms of dark sky lighting, bug ratings, um, full cutoff. Uh, we did go through, um, at least a revision or two to clarify, um, some of the extents of of that photometrics. But, um, overall, it is it is these, you know, four single lights. There's one small bollard just at the, uh, junction of the this community, you know, fire pit area. And then, um, we also included, uh, in this plan, the photometrics for, um, uh, ceiling mounted. There'll be flush ceiling mounted lights, uh, at each of the entries and under the, uh, bike shelters just for, you know, for general safety there, but those photometrics are also included here. Um, but there's no other exterior lighting that was that's proposed on the buildings or, uh, on the site. So, um, really trying to minimize, um, the amount of light, you know, in that in that part of the, um, neighborhood and and just, um, recognition that it is a dense neighborhood. Um, planting plan, um, obviously, as I mentioned before, there are a number of, um, mature Norway spruces on the site. Um, you know, we, there are a number that are still depicted here that are going to be preserved. Um, but there also are a number that that will need to come out as a result of the project. Um, you know, we recognize that that's certainly not the ideal situation, but, um, you know, I would offer that these are all, every single one of these is a Norway spruce. Um, all of them are ninety, you know, eighty to ninety feet tall and sort of reaching the end of their lifespan. Um, and, um, you know, particularly with those, that tree species, as you start to remove vegetation or as vegetation around these large, um, you know, groves die off, it just creates a a much larger hazard for the trees that are remaining because they are so big and that the wind throw during, you know, um, you know, heavy wind events has a tendency to, um, to wreak a lot of of havoc. So, um, you know, those, within the limited work we are proposing to remove, um, those have been accounted for in, um, we did include a tree removal, uh, plan that notes the, um, that notes the tree replacement required, um, what we're able to provide. Um, and then obviously the mitigation that's necessary to to compensate for the difference. But, you know, what is being planted are, um, you know, a number of, uh, you know, tree species, including white oaks. Um, we've got, um, we've got plane trees. Um, I think there's ironwood. We've got of, um, obviously some shad bush and a lancier, um, dogwoods. So there's a number of other species that we're trying to add to the, um, to the mix of of species out there to diversify that that woodland area, um, and obviously a number of, uh, scrub species as well, just to, um, sort of finish out that that landscape, offer buffers, um, you know, where where they're needed, um, up against the property lines and against property boundaries. Um, there are, there were four, uh, mature spruces here that, um, were recently added to be removed, just again, because of negotiations with the budding landowners and concerns about the, um, hazard of those. So in place, you know, we have added additional plantings. We do have some fencing, um, some screen fencing in locations where, uh, vehicle headlights may present, um, a concern. So those are certainly in areas, um, particularly along this edge where, um, headlights are, you know, may might be a concern. This northerly parking lot, um, is less so. This is quite a bit a distance from, um, neighboring residences. And then similarly here, um, there are residents to the east. Um, but we have, um, you know, provided a number of 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 plantings in there, um, just to to provide some additional screening and buffer. Um, again, just the tree removal exhibit, what you see in red is what's being proposed for removal. These are all, um, trees that would fall under the significant tree ordinance. Um, and I think all of these are, um, are Norway spruces. Um, but they've been accounted for, and as I mentioned, um, the mitig- the required mitigation is is being offered up as as part of this permit. Um. The project is highlight a couple of other things, um.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I know that tree removal is something that is of concern to some of the abutters. So can you just, uh, share with everybody the calculation of exactly what's being removed and how much is being replanted versus what's being paid into the tree inventory?
Yep.
Thank you.
So of the caliper inches, um, that are being removed, the total, um, the total caliper inches is seven hundred and seventy-seven inches. Um, that requires three hundred and eighty-nine inches of tree replacement. So it's essentially half of of the trees that are being removed. Uh, we are able to accommodate, uh, a hundred and fifteen inches of of tree caliper with a new planting plan in in the areas that we're planting. And so there's, uh, two hundred and seventy-four inches of of additional mitigation that's required, um, that would be in payment in lieu of, uh, planting. So that's certainly offered up as as part of the, um, as part of the project. Yep. Um. As I know, just a couple of other, uh, things to mention, oops. Um, that we are, um, we are providing a, uh, a new accessible sidewalk connection along the northern edge of View Avenue to connect to North Street. Um, this will be a a paved sidewalk, um, to provide, you know, fully accessible access out to the public way. We are also, um, we are also, um, improving or enhancing. Um, there's an existing trail that, um, it's, uh, sort of winds through. Um, I'll show you a better. So you can see evidence of it here that winds sort of across the backyards of all these properties, um, through these, through through the existing wetlands and sort of the drier areas and exits in a couple of locations. There's a very prominent, um, connection to the bike path, um, through what was formerly a, uh, sort of a homeless encampment in this area, um, but there's a real obvious connection to the bike path there. There's also a connection that that winds up and around, connects to the end of, uh, the western end of of Northern Ave before it crosses, um, this drainage ditch and then the bike path again. So, um, as part of this, we are proposing to relocate and enhance that trail, um, to, you know, relocate it to this property where possible, um, and then improve it to the extent that it's in, it would be established gravel path. There are some elevated portions of boardwalk that we are providing to get through the B B W portions, um, in consultation with the Conservation Commission. Um, so all of that is, you know, we're we're really trying to make that connection and that existing trail system, um, you know, part of this project and integrate it into the, um, some of the the pedestrian connections that, uh, exist now and and into the future. Um. What else? This does, um, just comment that this does, this project does fit, um, some of the goals of the Sustainable North Hampton Comprehensive Plan, particularly goal H one, which speaks to providing affordable, high-density housing for mixed, uh, for mixed incomes, um, with small, energy-efficient homes, and this certainly achieves all of those, um, all of those goals. Um. And then I think finally I would just speak to traffic before, um, presenting some of the architectural drawings. Um, as required, we did provide a traffic, uh, traffic, uh, mitigation summary. And essentially, the, um, you know, the the summary is that there is one existing single-family home, uh, that exists there now that would be accounted for. There are, uh, a, uh, twelve new ones that will replace that. So there were eleven, uh, additional single-family units, which would generate, um, a a, uh, an additional eleven vehicle trips during the peak hour. And so that's the mitigation, um, payment that's that's offered up as as part of the mitigation required for for the traffic increase. Um, it's, you know, it these, this isn't high, um, high-density, uh, housing necessarily. These aren't apartments. These are, you know, small, single-family, um, single-family units. Um, and I will try to run through some of these architectural slides and images, um, as best I can. And, um, if Charles wants to chime in, uh, at any point, uh, please interrupt me and let let him go. But, um, as I mentioned, we we approached this project, um, you know, in in a in a way that really tried to focus and enhance, um, the the resource areas on the site and the open space, being cognizant of, um, you know, the adjacent residential, um, homes and and properties. And, um, you know, not not overdevelop this this property as some of the previous projects that the board has has maybe seen in the in the past. Um, so these are all, um, again, small efficiency units, um, largest is about thirteen hundred square feet. Um, that's these three larger ones here, which, um, you know, are are larger really due to their, um, carport that is below the first floor or the upper floor. And then there's some, um, you know, additional, um, you know, living space on the on the upper level.
Um, Jeff, I'm sorry to ask you an architectural question, but what what are those wood slats on the larger units on the roof? In a sense?
That I think these are, these are the spaces above the, uh, carports, which are more intended to be, uh, three-season rooms. So I would imagine that's probably some slatted, um, opening in the ceiling to provide some light, some additional ventilation in that space. They're not meant to be, you know, I don't think it's a a necessarily fully conditioned space. Um. Would be my guess.
Okay.
But.
We'll let Carol's chat.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
There's like terraces on some of the unit types.
Yes.
The plans.
To clarify.
Is it like a skylight?
Eight hundred square feet, three twelve hundred square foot with carports, two bedrooms, two and a half bedroom at the car for the carport units. Um, and they're all all electric flat roofs, uh, with universal P V exposure. Um, and used to the private backyard spaces.
Oh, question. This is a, when you're cutting down all the trees. Uh, we're going to be cutting down. Are are you?
How, I'm sorry. So this is the, I mean, this is the way, this is looking west. Um, so the southern exposure really is, you know, off of off of this, this side of the of the site. Um. Yeah, I mean, there are a number of mature trees in that in that existing wetland area that, you know, we're certainly not proposing to cut down. Um, you know, some of those may limit, um, optimal solar exposure, but I I think the intention is certainly to, you know, have have, um, you know, solar capacity for any of these units. Um, you can see the small bike shelters, um, in this corner, and then, uh, again, further back on the site. Um, again, just other, uh, other views of the site, um, from different directions. This one's looking to the east. Um, again, this is, so there's two different versions of these smaller eight hundred square foot units, um, depending on their orientation. You can see in the site plan that some are oriented sort of a long way, um, and some are oriented, you know, horizontally with a with a long edge of the building to the to the sidewalk, to the open space. Primarily the differences in the way the interior space is oriented, so that in these, the narrower, um, oriented units, there's, you know, large glass, um, windows, um, views out the back, um, of the building, um, you know, offering views of that of that wetland area, that open space. This is the second floor. Um, again, two bedrooms, um, bath on the upper floor, um, large living space, open living space on the lower floor. Um, and then the, um, the other unit, which again, same size, same general footprint, offers, um, a long, uh, long open view, uh, along the longer horizontal ledge. So it offers some flexibility with regards to how we, uh, oriented the the different, uh, units on the site. Um, but these are all two-bedroom, um, one bath. Um, and yeah, less than eight hundred square feet. These are the larger, um, larger units, and you can see on this ground floor, there's, um, this is the single, uh, carport area, upper level, um, which you can see, let's see, over over here where the carport is. Um, the upper level is is got this sort of covered deck area on that upper level, um, with direct access from that second story. Um, offering, you know, that that additional amenity, there's a little bit of additional storage space on that ground floor, um, as well. So that's that's one of the benefits of those larger units, but there's there's three of those in general. Um, and these are just some images of, um, the bike shed. These show, you know, much more than four, um, bike, um, uh, bike racks. There's certainly capacity for these at a minimum. Like I said, very comfortably, we can fit, you know, sixteen, eighteen bikes, um, in in these. Um, but these are, um, you know, modest, um, you know, sheltered, um, covered areas for for bike storage and, uh, bike pumps, that types of thing. And then these are just a series of images, um, walking through the site. And then there's a little video, um, that, um, that Kuhn Riddle put together that I think is a good, um, uh, a good introduction to the site as well. So just looking, these are from the south, uh, western corner. Um, looking back, the resource areas, the wetlands are behind all of these units. The south part of the property, um, is off to the right here. Um, coming around, you can see one of the, uh, bike shelters here as you enter. These are one of the units as you come into the site. View Ave is off to the right. Um, road branches off to the north, um, and then to the south here, um, to the bottom of the page. Um, just sort of the back of the units. Again, we don't anticipate there's going to be much yuck on the wetlands, but the idea that these all face up against, um, you know, that that bordering vegetated wetland and, um, you know, really enhance that open space. Um.
Good question. So and what do we see there? Kind of wooden patio?
This area here?
Patio.
So these, I, this is what was shown in the, um, in this, these renderings, there the site plans don't include that space, so we're not proposing. There's wooden patios or concrete patios outside. Um, these, you know, these, if you look at the site plan, the the slope does drop off, you know, fairly, you know, quickly behind these units. So it's really a space that if somebody wants to put a chair or lawn chair, they could, they could put one, um. What the patio spaces? No, that's what I'm saying. They. Oh, interesting. Okay. So this may have been just updated recently. Yes. Yep. Um, so yeah, I mean, then is that that will just, you know, bleed off into the into the natural landscape there. Um. And then again, just back of the, back of the. The back of the units here, and I'll just share this, hold on. Share. This is just a nice. The walkthrough video of the site, which I think just sort of gives a nice overview of. Of the general character that we're, we're hoping to accomplish. Again, this is looking south into that, that southerly parking lot. Wetlands are to the right and now behind these, these units. You can see the upper decks of the carports. And then just moving to the north around that larger loop. You know, primarily these, these smaller units oriented, you know, the long way and, and on the narrow access to provide some, some diversity. And then around to the end of that upper parking lot where that bike shelter is. And then just from the back, again, just getting, getting views in and through, you know, one of the, one of the big goals of this was to provide, you know, a lot of open views through the site. And so both between the buildings and then just with a lot of glass on that lower level, that as you come into the site, there are a number of units that actually, you know, offer views, you know, completely through and, and to those wetland areas in the back, so trying to make this site as sort of transparent as possible. And not present a, you know, wall of structure along that edge, so. With that, I will open it up to.
Hold on just for a little bit, we'll open up public comment in a few minutes, okay?
Can I, Jeff, did you say, are you, you're scheduled for the twenty-seventh for the conservation?
I saw some, yeah, some chatter on the public portal, I didn't get a confirmation of the date, but if that.
Yeah.
That sounds like it would.
So the end of June, I think.
Yeah.
Good, that was one of my questions about input from the Conservation Commission at this point, so there hasn't been any. We haven't met first one. Other questions from board members?
Want to make a general statement for the, for the public's awareness, we're the planning board, so we're not the Conservation Commission. We're not really concerned with the different buffer zones or anything in relation to conservation areas. Right, so we're looking more about the, the site layout and setbacks and open space and those sorts of things, but not the wetlands themselves. We'll let our colleagues in the Conservation Commission deal with that on the twenty-seventh or whenever that hearing is scheduled.
Thank you. Other questions, will we open up the public comment?
I'm, can you say a little bit more about the pedestrian path with the gravel and the boardwalk areas, et cetera? I'm guessing the Conservation Commission is going to be looking at that as well, since it's going straight through, you know, some of that, those protected areas, but I didn't totally catch where it is on the site and particularly how it's connected for the people who are living on this parcel, parcels.
So we did go through a number of conversations, both with Planning Department and Conservation to try and make sure that whatever we were proposing would be approvable by both boards, both commissions. Both in terms of just ensuring that we enhanced or protected that existing connection, pedestrian connection, but also with respect to, you know, what we could and can't do in the wetland. There is, there are, there is a limited project status for pedestrian paths in resource areas, provided that there are certain width and certain materials. And so that's what we worked with the Conservation Department on, just to make sure that what we were proposing would be approvable under their regulations. So most of this, you know, a lot of this is sort of an old former roadbed and in many sorts. So it's, it's, you know, vegetation is closing in, but there is a, a pretty clearly defined, you know, pedestrian path. We're really, you know, we will do some vegetation pruning where we're necessary to make sure that that's, you know, that, that pathway is, is open and clear and, and, you know, safe for pedestrian travel. Where it crosses over, it does meander, you know, back and forth across some of these rear property lines. So where possible, we've taken it, you know, within this property itself and relocated it and reconnected it back up to its existing alignment to make sure that, you know, that it's all on this property and will be maintained by, you know, this, this entity. And then, yeah, where, where it does extend through some wetter portions of that B V W during the wet season, we've proposed some elevated boardwalk, that again, just is in compliance with that limited project status under the wetland regulations. So all of that will be, yeah, we were, so the two things that we're, we're improving and enhancing it as much as possible to be able to ensure that that connection will remain. And then we are relocating it where possible to, to have all of that trail system be within this property. So they have control and responsibility over that.
And so is there, when we were out on a site visit, it looked like there is a sort of informal path going from sort of the front of the shed over to that portion of the lot where the pathway is. Are you formalizing that connection as well? So people on this who are living in these homes would be able to access it right from.
Yes.
That corner.
So, so it's, I can't see too well here, but yes, off this, off this bike shelter in the corner, this is where the trail is now, just, just off the edge of the northern edge of this page. So there is a path connection that's shown on the plans that, you know, connects up here into that, directly into that, that trail.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That plan set was updated yesterday, the day before, so previously it was just described, but not shown on the plan.
Good, so just in terms of process, I want to be kind of clear, we're still awaiting stormwater report and some comments on the D P W.
Right, so the plans were submitted today to D P W, so there was, they didn't have time to review them. So that's for both stormwater and the other comments that were, had been made about utilities and so forth. So because of the stormwater ordinance, the planning board can't close the public hearing tonight. And can't close the public hearing until a stormwater permit has been issued. So I would recommend that, you know, you identify any other issues that might need to be addressed for the inevitable continuation in order to hear the, you know, to make sure that stormwater permit gets issued. And then all of those then can be, you know, addressed when the stormwater permit has been issued.
So in terms of public comment, we can also take public comment, because there's quite a crowd here and also on Zoom. And we'll, we'll list out the comments that are made, some of them we may address tonight, the applicant may address, others we won't. But it'll be very important that we don't go through those same comments two weeks from now when we continue the hearing. So if folks are mindful of that.
And I would just say, it's not necessarily going to be two weeks, because in two weeks, your agenda is pretty full, so.
Thank you. Okay, and Carolyn, help me a little bit, I've been around for a long time, but I'm forgetful, why is this not a subdivision?
So a subdivision is the creation of a street that creates frontage. So, and all the street infrastructure that goes with it. So this is already, this is a private way essentially, it's not a public street. So the frontage, frontage for this parcel is actually that piece that connects to North Street. So View Avenue is just avenue in name, it's not a street. And all the units are on a single parcel, so it's not subdivided into lots along a street front.
Thank you. And there was, I thought there was some legal, legal background with this street or with this access previously, what has changed?
So the legal access was actually related to a paper street that was never built on the north side, so right where Jeff is aligning. So previously, when the project came before the planning board and was approved, it had many more units pushed closer into the wetland, but also took advantage of a paper street, which, where Jeff is putting his cursor. And that's what was determined to be not allowed usage for this property owner to access the property, so that's the difference, is just a single access.
Thank you for the clarification.
And now the applicant owned to Do Street, it's a private road, and it's like a long driveway into this one lot.
Right. And that's the way it always was.
Okay.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
There's shared access off of that for other houses?
Right, so, you know, it'd be, I don't know what the deeds references say, but my assumption is that there is something in the deed that allows, is an easement essentially for those other units to cross this property in order to get to their property.
Okay. And with the conversations you've been having about this trail system, is there an associated easement with that for the public use? Or are we just relying on the applicant's goodwill to allow, to allow people to keep using that?
Yeah, so the, there, you all can't require the applicant to provide public access unless they were offering it for, you know, traffic mitigation purposes or something like that. So it would be, so the idea though is they need to provide a connection from this project to Northern, Northern Avenue, but that's really for the use of the future property owners or users of the property. And it's up to the applicant to determine whether that's available for the general public to use.
Okay.
Thanks. Other general or specific questions from the board before we open it up? We're good?
I, well, I guess if we're asking questions, my only one is on the photometric plan. So I was wondering if we could just zoom in on some of the areas by the property lines. I didn't, I'll admit, I didn't take a great look at this. Right, so, I mean, there is a little bit of spillover, the property line.
Yeah, you do, I mean, keep in mind, we do have a fence along this edge. But that's, yeah, that's, I think that's the closest.
And then there's one other further north, right?
These are all.
Yeah, right there. So a little spillover.
To right, just rest of the property line, yeah.
Yeah. And then my only other comment, because everyone knows how much I love our new lighting ordinance. I noticed that these light fixtures are three thousand Kelvin temperature, and I'm pretty sure that we require twenty-seven hundred Kelvin.
We can certainly. Yeah, spec that as, I know, I, I will say, it has been, it has been a challenge.
I believe you, David and I believe you.
It has been an extreme.
Even and I told yourself, but no one listens.
We are bending the industry.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not so much, it's not so much bending the industry as it is finding either A, products and, and lighting that even fits those categories, but then get, even getting the photometrics on them, nobody, you know, for liability reasons will do them. So it's been a.
Thank you for raising that.
When you base your lighting ordinance on astronomer's recommendation.
Duly noted, duly noted, I'm sure the applicant can come back to the planning office, the building inspector, and ask for a waiver if it's impeding that completion of the development and when the development, you know, approved. Until those are much more readily available. All right, thank you, hard lighting expert. We can't change an ordinance tonight. So why don't we open up the public comment? And again, there's a good crowd here, many people with, spent some time. Figured out how they're going to address the board, so I would suggest that you limit your comments to two minutes. And I will nudge you if you're going over that. And if you are coming up after someone else, please try not to repeat their comment or their topics, we're pretty smart here on the board and we can gather most of the inferences around traffic and wetlands and things of that nature. So we didn't, we don't have a sign-up seat.
So we'll. Leave this up, just, yeah.
Sure, and you might need to be nearby, Jeffrey, but, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. And again, the comments from the public are addressed to the planning board members, and we don't respond to each comic as it is. We take the comments, we can then cluster them into patterns, and then the board addresses them after the comment period as best as we can, along with the applicant. All right, we don't have a sign-up list, who's brave enough to go first here in council chambers? And if you just give us your name and address when you start, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone, my name is David Fenton, I live at one sixty-four, one sixty-six North Street, which is this. If I can get the cursor to move, I'm so technology savvy, this would be my house right here. So it abuts the View Avenue and this back portion. Our concern here is that when, and I gotta say, Mr. Cerula has been very good communicating with us. He sat down with us on several occasions in my yard, and it's been wonderful to have that dialogue going about how this was all developing. Things have changed as a, as a result of our input, and we truly appreciate that. Initially, he had a common area for the residence there, which was going to be down here. But apparently it fell within the two hundred-foot area of the river, which I don't know if you've all been out there, it's just a little covert, that kind of oozes more times than not. It's more, it's heavier down the other end, so they had to be moved, that has now been moved up to right in this area. And you and I are closer than where this is going to be for my backyard, that's my concern. I mean, you can dumb it down a little bit, saying, you know, there's twelve houses, there's going to be twelve cars, well, everyone has two cars, so there's going to be a lot more traffic. And to have a common area, I guess it's a policy or zoning thing that this has to be in place. And I, I question that because in some instances, that may be applicable, that may be needed. But in this location in Ward Three downtown North Hampton, basically, you are with that ramp, you're thirty seconds from the, from the bike path, but by bike, you're right now either a minute or a minute and a half by bike to Bates Street or the Woodmont Road connection. And as far as open space, you have Lampard Park, which is about a five-minute walk, and you have the very spacious Sheldon Field, which is five minutes from there. So my question is, why does it need to be there? Again, the property is going to be from here to you away, do we need twelve houses congregating there, having a party there? Having a fire pit there, that close to our backyard, it's right there. If you came out, you would know that, you would, you could see that personally, it is very, very close. So I would like to see if that could be moved somewhere or maybe permission to not have something like that in this particular case. And this is the first time we've heard about the sidewalk, we knew it was going to be a berm or a curb along View Avenue. This is the first we've heard of a sidewalk, we're just, but we'll talk to Mr. Cerula about that, but we, we do appreciate your time. And, and I guess the other thing was the culvers, the drainage ditches, I, I kind of forget where those are going to be. I kind of thought they were up maybe one here and another one down here somewhere, but again, that's something we can address with them.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time, I truly appreciate it, thank you.
Staying here at council chambers for public comment. Please.
Hi, good evening, my name's Jane Myers, I live in Florence, and I've been learning about this proposed project through the files in the city and from residents who are friends of mine on North Street. It's clear to me that the significant trees, I know that you said that you don't deal with wetlands, but it directly affects the site plan that you heard about in great detail, so I want to just talk a bit about it and let the cons come to make the decision too. It's clear to me that the significant trees and wetlands mean a lot to the people who live in this neighborhood, they appreciate the flood control, heat mitigation that the woods. heat mitigation that the woods and wetlands provide. The neighborhood also understands how excessively high the water table is at eight View Avenue. Upon reading the plans and documents, it's amazing to me that the city would allow twenty nine out of thirty five Norway spruce trees to be cut down. That's the number twenty nine. That's eighty two percent of the trees. And differently from what was said by the presenter before, the USDA says their lifespan is more likely two hundred years plus. Some in optimal circumstances, up to three hundred years. The city would also be allowing within thirty five feet of the bordering vegetated wetlands near Milliard Brook. These woods and wetlands purify the city's air and groundwater. They provide shade that's fifteen degrees cooler than the temperatures downtown North Hampton. And each of the thirty five significant trees, which range in diameter from twenty to forty seven inches, absorb up to one hundred fifty gallons of water per tree per day. So without those trees, that water is going to be even a greater issue. The developers proposing to add eighty three percent more impervious space area, surface area to the site. Without the trees and wetlands to mitigate heavy rainstorms and severe stormwater runoff, the homes to be constructed with slab on grade foundations will be vulnerable to flood risk. Tropical Storm Floyd covered the highest points of the parcel in nineteen ninety nine, up land of where the homes are to be built. Because the homes are built so low to the ground, they are more susceptible to flooding than homes with regular foundations and full basements. I believe these woods and wetlands should be purchased and permanently protected by the city of North Hampton. The residents of this neighborhood deserve protection from climate change, just like any other neighborhood in the city. And I just have two questions you can consider. Could you please confirm what the current open space is on the plans? And would you clarify how far above grade the first floors of the homes are? Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, Ms. Myers. Anyone else?
I'd say sovereign builders, I'm the applicant. So just wanted to say that we looked at a number of different options for this property and most of which had higher density and likely, you know, or definitely greater profitability. So I think it's oftentimes misconstrued that developers driven solely by profit. These are standalone units that are of modern design. And so minimalist or modern is much more expensive. So anytime you're building an individual unit and not grouping units in a single building, it's more expensive. So we really carefully looked at and wanted to do something different and something forward thinking, something interesting for, for, for the city and in the process, trying to preserve the land and be mindful of, of the, you know, natural characteristics of the area. Obviously, it's, it's desirable in that it it hopes to minimize vehicle traffic and to, you know, promote people going to work or shopping, walking or bicycle, using a bicycle, bike trail is right there. So it's, it's important, I think, to note that it's really not driven by profit. This, this is, this is, these are highly energy efficient, very different design, modern design. And it's, and so there's many, many ways to have done this for more profit. So I really was interested in doing something interesting and different and hopefully it'll have some, it'll be in demand, but that's yet to be seen because it's so small. You know, how many people want to own and live in an eight hundred square foot house? I guess that's yet to be seen. The infrastructure cost is very high here to work on the site. So the driver is really to do something that works well for the city, that, that, that creates housing, but also is attractive and appealing and works with the habitat, the nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sirula.
Sovereign's project.
Uh, name and address, please.
Bridges, twelve Northern Avenue, almost and a butter. Sovereign's project represents precisely what urban areas need to not be doing. We need to protect woods in this age of climate, twenty twenty three, this past year has been determined to be the hottest year ever. We can expect this to continue. That woods cools our neighborhood. It is I who brought my thermometer downtown, measured one hundred degrees under the Silverscape Designs thing and then took it to the woods. It was eighty five degrees. This is so incredibly valuable to the city of North Hampton. I charge you, planning board members, Carolyn, all of you to save this woods and to prevent all of this impervious surface, the cutting of trees and then the paving. It's extraordinary and we need to keep that cooling. The, we need that buffer between King Street and North Street. We need you to be responsible, members of the community, and say no to this project.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? If not, we'll move over to the folks on Zoom. Yeah, again, to process if the meeting is, the meeting will be continued tonight and there will be, we will not close the public comment period, I don't think. So there will be another opportunity for the public to come forward and speak. We'll just try to kind of hone in on those comments. Yep. Please come up and ask your question. It doesn't have to be a comment. You don't have.
My name's Ross Luntory and I live on Northern Avenue. And I was just curious if this project continue, I don't know if it includes the parcel on Northern or if it's just view as its own. I know that there's another lot that's on Northern. Just wanted to know how they relate to each other.
If, if I understand the applicant's presentation, there's one lot that's going to be peeled off and listed as an A and R lot. And that's probably the one that you're detailing. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, in fact, that's the A and R on the agenda for later is that parcel on Northern.
And just explain what A and R means.
So anyone who owns property along an existing street that has frontage that meets the minimum frontage requirement in the zoning district. And the lot size can come before the planning board to essentially carve out a separate building lot. And it comes to the planning board and the planning board looks at it and determines that there's no additional frontage that's required to be built in order to create that parcel. So that's why it's called, it's subdivision approval not required in order to create a separate building lot along frontage. So that is the process by which the applicant is going to create that separate building lot at the end of Northern. The back of it, it's not connected to this project, but it is, it abuts the project. And the path, the pedestrian path goes around that parcel. Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just one question, please.
Come on, last one from you for the time being.
People are sending in questions to you via your computer.
Correct.
Is that accessible to us since it's a public hearing?
Well, we'll.
How do we get access?
We'll read them out loud.
Oh, okay.
Come in. Okay.
It's in a more.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Okie doke. So at this point, we'll move over to the participants on Zoom. Carolyn, actually, I don't see any at this point, but it may be something about mine. Yep.
So.
Okay, Eileen Messer. How do these designs conform to the existing architecture? Mary, I live at one eighty four, one eighty six North Street, and there are certain times of the year with heavy rainfall, my cellar floods. Since these homes will be built on slabs, I imagine they will flood. Even if they don't, they will likely develop health destroying mold and the builders will have walked away.
Just hold on, Carolyn. The first one was about how do these new proposed buildings align with the existing architecture of the neighborhood? Is that the way you understood?
That was the intention, but it just said, how do these designs conform to existing architecture? Yes. So I assume that's with the neighborhood. Yeah.
Second one's about high water table.
And those are the ones that have yet to be addressed.
So there are only two comments offered from the public? And there's one hand raised from Jacqueline's iPhone. I believe this is the resident who are going to offer time to speak verbally because of an accommodation. So do we need to unmute Jacqueline?
Did we have a letter from this person? Was that different?
I believe there is a letter from this person also in the public file. There's a number of letters from the butters in the public file that the board has looked at prior to the meeting. So that's a very good question. We can't not have her speak because she offered a letter.
That's fine. I just wanted to make it clear that we have read the letters that you've submitted. So those are also acknowledged.
Great.
Great.
And then so the request was for a reasonable accommodation. And so the response was, you know, even though the reasonable accommodation is met through chat, George had asked me to send a message back to Jackie that 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 would be accommodated for one minute of oral comment on Zoom, even though it's above and beyond what a reasonable accommodation would be. So I will need to, let me just unmute. Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine.
Okay, great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jacqueline McCraner. I live at one twenty four North Street. As I'm hearing, not all of the residents in the North Street neighborhood support the proposed project at eight View Avenue. I am a three hundred foot of butter and I do not support it. Our water tables are excessively high due to the presence of underground streams and springs. The Milliard Brook that flows here from the Connecticut River and because we're at the foot of the steep side of the Round Hill Road, Glacial Drumland, which has its own underground springs and streams. I do not believe permitting the proposed project is a responsible action by the city. Building in the wetlands would strip our neighborhood of critical flood control as well as heat mitigation from the significant trees. Cutting down the significant trees would strip the city of its heat mitigation of the downtown North Hampton Heat Island. Slab on grade foundations built in wetlands are prone to flooding, mold, mildew, cracking due to soil settlement, heat loss and costly maintenance and repairs. It may cost less to build up front, but maintenance issues can be an expensive nightmare down the road for homeowners. Destroying the woods and wetlands behind eight U Avenue to build twelve homes, which folks aren't even sure here, it sounds like if people are going to want to live in such small homes. So to gamble with that with slab on grade foundations is not the answer to the housing crisis. This project, in my view, is morally reprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Good, good point. And we heard you loud and clear. It came through very well. And we appreciate the letter that you sent to us prior to this. Are there any other comments from? Okay, so we'll turn it back to the board for questions at this point. We'll keep the public comment period open, but we'll turn it over to the board. And again, we're trying to raise raise issues for the applicant so that they can go away and address those if there's some serious ones that we're unclear about.
Really doesn't need to be resolved now because we're going to be coming back. It would be great to, to look at this, the plan and figure out where else you might be able to put the that social hall, rather than social.
It's not base. It's not all.
The social rock pit.
Okay. The, the gathering place around.
Got it.
Thank you. Even I, I think in the past, I, I, I respect Chris's comment about that we're not the conservation commission, but in the past, when we've looked at projects like this of many houses backed up to a conservation area, wetlands area, the planning board has talked about some way of trying to limit, and this may happen at the conservation commission, but limit the, the human tendency to kind of improve your backyard space, create lawns, play areas for your children, badminton, that's whatever. So I just want to go on record and hoping that conservation commission looks at that also, some way of creating some kind of bounds so that five years from now, new homeowners aren't increasing their lawn into that area if this is approved.
Yeah, I'll just say that they regularly create conditions that sort of create those hard barriers for that purpose.
Thanks.
Physically in the ground. Stone bounds, ballards.
Is there a fence at, there's at that front? I guess you call it the front. It's called the side setback in the plan. But at that area of the common space, is there, there's no lot line fence there?
No, I think it's just vegetation right now.
Okay. So the existing vegetation is what's in the drawing? That's what's there?
Proposed as part of the plan, right, is, is planting.
In the back of all of the parking areas.
Step up to them, please. So our friends in our hybrid setting can hear you. Thank you.
So you're referring to this area here? Is that what you're speaking to? Yeah. So I mean, there's some additional, there's some plantings there now. We're proposing some additional plantings on, on this part of the, on this site to help offer that.
In terms of fencing, the only fences are behind that one parking area in the southern end.
Right.
The other parking areas, the headlights, you assume will be blocked by.
Yeah, I mean, this, this northern in the area is quite a distance and there's quite a bit of vegetation. This one similarly is, you know, there's, there's a pretty dense cluster of trees here, not, not all of which are coming down. So that's, yeah, there's, there isn't much, you know, headlight intrusion in, in other portions of the, of the site.
So you might want to work with the property owner to see if like a high fence there might be a solution.
Along this edge?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we could tell you to put it down in that nook that's in the two hundred riverfront zone, but the conservation commission might not like that. So.
No, we intentionally took it out of there just to avoid riverfront area impact. So yeah, we really were trying to avoid any, any jurisdictional resource area impacts with the project.
So where's the A and R that we're going to be looking at?
That's this one here.
So after a number of meetings with the, the butters and talking about the fire pit area, we feel like there is a better location that, that is that we might move one of the bike storage areas, but it was pretty unanimous that the director butters wanted to see it moved from the location that David is concerned about. And so um, we're open to that, to finding an alternative to that. And I feel like it's, it's a good idea and it's very possible. I own a property on Northern and we talked about, and it's larger than necessary for zoning. We talked about carving out, reconfiguring that lot so that it might move there as well. But I think there are some alternatives that would be more agreeable to the butters and, and good alternatives.
And that common area can be within the setback. There's nothing built in there. And that common area can be within the setback. There's nothing built in there. It's just a gravel area. Or maybe shifting it so it's the the Butters garage is between the common space and the house. I mean, that's a garage that we're seeing, right?
Right, it it is.
Right.
But as David said, if you, if you, if you view this site, it it seems pretty close, although there is a buffer of his garage and and his house. And with some plantings, I think it might be less uh disturbing than it is on the plan, but I think we should look at and, you know, consider some other options as well. And we, you know, we spent quite a, quite a bit of time meeting with the neighbors and and really wanna work with them and and make sure everybody has input and that we listen and try to try to work with it as much as possible.
Good. We're big, we're big fans of covered bike areas, though, so don't lose them.
I'm not saying eliminate.
That's all.
I think David would be okay with a covered bike area as long as it's not an area to congregate.
Very good.
So that might be something we see on a revised plan at the next hearing, the next meeting.
Potentially.
Okay.
Other? No, no. Maybe at this.
Well, we, there's a question about the sidewalk, right? Sidewalk material?
Yes, so that requirement, uh it needs to be cement, concrete, not batuminous. Yeah.
And so how, how far into the site does that need to be? I mean, this whole thing, this isn't a street. I mean, this is part of the the parcel. So I just, I don't quite understand. I mean, we don't require people to have concrete walks in their to their house, right?
I would suggest that it go to that crosswalk. I mean, or it could, I mean, basically the the zoning says um essentially the the pieces of the project that act and function like a street, you need to build the infrastructure and the sidewalk connectivity in compliance with our street standard. So that View Avenue, even though it's not a street, it's acting like that for this process project. So you know, pulling it into where the T is um for the rest, I think that would be appropriate if it makes sense to go up and around to the crosswalk. That might make sense. And then the rest of it could be batuminous.
Will that that will essentially narrow View Avenue?
It will a little bit.
Is is uh is View Avenue paved to the edges of the?
To the edges of the city's easement to the property line?
To the right of it. It's not a right of way, but.
It's a property line.
Okay, I mean, the site plan shows that it looks like there's some, a couple of feet, not quite five feet, but it looks like there's some space.
Yeah, it's grass pretty much goes up.
Good, um, the concerns about high water table um and the the culvert and stormwater retention um will be addressed more or less and be evaluated by the city engineers.
Right, they've, they have evaluated that. You'll see comments about it, but the infiltration system, for example, the standard is, has to be two feet above high groundwater. I mean, the reason why they're building on slab is because the groundwater's height varies from a foot and a half to three feet, something um above um seasonal, seasonal high groundwater. So um the point is that, you know, they're not putting the foundations in seasonal high groundwater. So.
Look at that grading plan. It seems like you're building it up quite a bit above existing grade.
It's in the back portion of the site, yes. And they're in the western portion, yes.
Yeah.
So that it's, it's essentially taking the.
Speed or something.
The force, yeah, it varies. Yep.
Um, Carolyn, we heard, you know, certainly quite a few comments about the loss of trees in relationship to the establishment of new housing. Um, you provided us with a, uh, and you or the applicant provided us with some charts, some kind of evaluation of, I think, trees in terms of the carbon loss. Um, could you talk about that a little bit for?
Sure. So we, over the last um six months or so, um what our office contracted with um uh consultants to do um set, sort of create a tool for us to look at carbon impacts of different um um various um projects and outcomes and locations. So this calculator essentially looks, you can put the input in and sort of what the existing conditions are, um where the project is located and what the um typical vehicle miles traveled are for each geographic area of the city. So that has a carbon impact. So basically looking at transportation impacts, building impacts, trees, existing buildings versus proposed. And so um we ran numbers of this project in this location versus this number of units in a similar project further out in a different location and the impacts were much higher, building in sort of new pristine area out, let's say, Ryan Road or Florence Road or something like that. Um, so again, we know that there's a huge demand for housing. And that, you know, we are, that's part of the issue and related to this um um climate change that affects people who are at the lower end of our economic spectrum more than others. And so you know, about looking at that evaluation, both in the short term and also the long term, I think is important. Um, the zoning ordinance does not say not to remove trees, but in fact, we go beyond most other cities in the Commonwealth and require replacement based on a calculation for the, for that tree removal. And of course, it's not all the trees on the site. It's in, and there are no trees, you know, between the, at the thirty-five foot buffer, um, of course, from that. So um um, so that was sort of the quick look at that. Um, and so um you know, we think that certainly from the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, the um the building, the building um standards for these new buildings are highly efficient in addressing um units that are, you know, accessible, more accessible to people um because of their size, simply because of their size, and of course, the access to the bike path and the network in the street in the, in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
And that, that was one other comment we heard was the open space calculation. I mean, I would have to think for like over ninety percent or something.
Open space, yeah, it's, we're less than ten percent, I think, or, you know, twelve percent with with impervious area on the overall all property.
So like eighty-eight percent open space.
Right.
Right.
Yep. Yep. And the other comment we heard was, does this style of housing fit in with the existing architecture? Well, it does not mirror the existing architectural, which is, you know, early nineteen hundred, most of it, uh, single family homes. Um, but it's certainly something different, something innovative in this person's perspective. So whether or not it fits into the 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 uh architecture of that neighborhood around North Street and the cemetery, um, I don't think that really comes into our consideration um at this point. It is a kind of set apart also in many ways, but I appreciate the uh, the developer trying to do something different, trying to do something smaller and uh uh perhaps taking a gamble, perhaps not. We'll see if this project is approved.
Um, and just sort of on that note, you know, this neighborhood is, uh, as you know, along with many other neighborhoods, has sort of an eclectic mix of architectural styles and the zoning does not pick or dictate architectural styles. It's really more about scale. More than architectural style. There were, there's one other comment that came in. If you're done, once you're done talking on, I just didn't wanna forget on chat.
Great. Go ahead.
Okay. David from one twenty-five North Street, um it just made a comment, several new developments in downtown North Hampton have homes that have been on the market for several years that have yet to sell. For example, Bridge Street, Pomeroy Terrace, the condos on Holly Street. Meanwhile, we have a lack of affordable housing and a climate crisis on our hands. What will be the plan if these homes do not sell?
The, the.
Drop the price.
Drop the price, go to the bank. But thank you, David. I think that does raise, I think in the application, the application speaks to uh one point eight percent or 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 some of the units being in an affordable range. Is that true? I think it was.
Um, I don't recall that specifically, but certainly with the smaller scale units, the you know, the the target market is for something, you know, lower than, you know, what an average, you know, eighteen hundred, two thousand square foot, single family home would go for. That this is, you know, we're offering something unique in the market that um you know, hopefully there's, there's a demand for. It seems like there's certainly some appeal in other towns, so.
For sure. I'll, I'll, I'll look again, though. I thought in the application, there is something, a percentage of the twelve units would be uh affordable and it came out to one point eight percent.
And there's a, there's a requirement in the zoning that um a percentage of the units either be affordable or be less than twelve twelve hundred square feet. So I think the number is nine of those units are under twelve hundred square feet and three of them are the three larger ones that were discussed. So I think that was, and that's, the zoning requires that, but it's either or. It's, and so given that these are, you know, around nine hundred square feet, by their very nature are gonna be more accessible to people at the, at a lower price point.
Thanks. All right. Should we make a motion to continue the hearing at this point, or can I give the audience one last bite at the apple? Everybody okay till we come back again?
Can you talk to the calendar?
Okay, we have one last comment here.
I appreciate the concern about housing. Let's talk about Airbnb. Most of many, many houses along North Street throughout this neighborhood we have been talking about are now Airbnb. People have come from outside, bought houses, built their own house out back and then rented out the front house in Airbnb. Other people, many, many people throughout North Street area are doing Airbnb. If we want housing, let's have the conversation about Airbnb. And empty dwellings. There are houses that have been empty for years. We need to deal with this and we need to, these are places where people used to live. One of these houses that's been empty for the last few years, these people own it and they come. Every time they come to town, like once a year or something, they stay there, this wealthy couple. And I, I said to the next door neighbor, don't you wonder how many people lived there fifty years ago? She said, I happen to know. I lived here. There were eleven people and she named them. You know, this extended family. So we went from eleven people living in this house down to zero.
Paige Bridgens, Northern Avenue.
That's right.
Please come on up to the podium.
Well, I did wanna say, my name is Dennis Helms, one seventy-four.
You gotta be at the mic there.
Come on up, Dennis. Watch out for that cord.
Uh, Dennis Helms, one seventy-four, one seventy-six North Street. I just wanna make sure since the hearing is still being continued, this, I wanna think more about what I wanna say and how I wanna say it. So I just wanna make sure that A, I can email you my comments and B, when you next meet, not in two weeks evidently.
Correct.
Still speak at that time.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Everyone will be able to speak again.
Okay.
And it'll be posted in a, in a legal way.
Today is not now. Speak your piece forever. Hold your, speak now or forever hold your peace.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it won't, will it be posted? I think. Yeah, agenda. Right. It'll be on, it'll be on the agenda, but.
They don't resend postcards, but it'll.
You won't get a new notification.
Right.
This hearing is your notification.
No, but there's a legal notice posted at City Hall, wherever Carolyn does.
The agenda, forty-eight hours.
The agenda.
Yeah.
But no, there won't be postcards to Butters.
And we will set the date and time of the continuation.
Right now.
Yeah.
So.
So you can write down and send it to yourself.
So this is gonna be based on the doodle poll, right? That you all answered.
During the summer, the planning board often goes down to one meeting a month.
Damn, you did not answer.
I mean, what are the dates against?
Rather than two meetings a month.
And then we'll email.
So um the most people could attend was July twenty-fifth and August twenty-second. And then, so um those are the fourth Thursdays of the month. So the next meeting would be July twenty-fifth. Sam, can you make that one?
Because our next meeting, June twenty-seventh is our full agenda.
Right.
So then our next one is gonna be once, just once in July. Okay.
I move to continue the hearing at Eightview Avenue to sometime that Carolyn will tell us on July twenty-fifth.
I mean, you can do seven o'clock because we don't have anything yet set for the agenda.
Seven o'clock on July twenty-fifth.
I second.
Great. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of moving it to July twenty?
Fifth.
At seven o'clock. All right, unanimous. Thank you, folks, for coming. We have a few more things. We're gonna, okay, minutes, talk about the A and R. If anybody wants to stay.
Carolyn, are we confirmed for that other August, August?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yeah, the most people could come to that, so.
But I can't come, right?
Um, let me just see. You changed so many times.
I did?
I think you just changed once. Twenty-second. Wait a second. Why are you not showing up?
I did respond. It took me a.
Rutt row. I hope people can come the twenty-fifth. Um, David, you can't.
I can.
I don't see you. I don't see you on here.
You're still here. Yeah, that was fun.
Oh, it's not over yet. It's not over yet. We're getting to the real meat.
You said maybe.
Yeah, that's definitely.
That was just the filler.
Isn't that weird?
We get to the real stuff.
Oh. Did you fill in?
And ours. This is where the bread is buttered.
That sounds.
I'm not even up there.
I know.
Wait, if you put your mouse in there and then try to scroll, it's a.
Oh, like.
So the rubber hits the road.
Not anymore. Do you remember?
Um, well, I'm out of town on the twenty-second, so I know I can't do it, but I can do the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So.
So we'll still have seven, six or seven for the twenty-second. Oh, right. She can't do that. So that's.
She can't do this.
Right, 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 right. Oh, right. This is the twenty-fifth anyway. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Okay.
And we'll say, forget about it.
Solid. Um, okay, so the only other thing is the, um, oh, boy, um, the A and R. Let's see if I can pull this up. Yes.
But this A and R.
Write it on a postcard and mail it to yourself.
Completely separate.
See my calendar?
Yeah, you can send yourself an email. So.
This is.
I do it all the time. Send myself an email on the phone.
You just have to stack those, like every day you send it for a month later so you can stack them up.
My grandfather, my wonderful grandfather, when he was quite aged, had, we had a shared Google Calendar for him and once a week he had a agenda item on it that said, change pants.
Two weeks.
Once a week. Yeah. That, yeah, I still have it, actually. Yeah, it was, who was gonna take him to church this week and everything? Yep.
Is that, so that's why your calendar is so full?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just, um. They must not have replied to the system, damn. Okay. So um I can pull up the survey. I mean, obviously you saw it. Yeah, I'm gonna have to pull up the. Yeah, I'm gonna have to pull up the. Right. So, um, it's really just, um, it's over a hundred feet affrontage on Northern. Um, I mean, sorry. In order to create fifty feet affrontage, they were required to extend and build a section of Northern. So they've completed that. Okay, you want a screenshot? Just kidding. So wait, what is it? That's so weird. Twenty-four-four.
Chris Kearney?
Yeah. Oh, twenty-four, twenty-four. What?
What is the search? Why are you in there? To search A and R? You're in a whole different system than I'm in. Where's the regular one with this, the one? You have all this stuff.
Cause I'm not in the public portal. Yeah, yeah. You guys saw it. I.
Just hold, David, just hold that up in front of the camera, so we can see it.
I'm just gonna pull up the survey.
Take a picture of it and then email it.
Okay. You guys wanted to spend a lot of time here, didn't you? Um, yeah.
If you're on Zoom, we're just pausing a little bit to find uh, location for our A and R discussion.
I just did search up here.
Oh, right.
Records. There you go, it's twenty-four-four.
Oh, my God, that's. Okay. So I'll pull up the details, files. Really? That's how you are now? I know, like.
Hold it like a map and. Yeah, over here. It allows us to cut down more trees.
It's a comment?
Well, there is.
Oh.
So, um, there it is, Lot One. Um, so there's this extension. So this is fifty feet of an ex, of, um, wasn't quite fifty feet of extension, but, um, see there, the seam there. So this meets the fifty-foot frontage, but the lot is much bigger.
Was that extension done to allow this to be such, to be Anard?
Because it wasn't improved frontage. So even though the layout, the right of it was there.
Was there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the city extended the road.
Applicant.
And do they also have to like extend the services, like the sewer and water?
Yeah, so that was extended, yep.
It was. Wow.
And this is a bike path, a, a, a walking path to the rail trail.
Right. So at some point, you know, that's on our radar to make it accessible. But, um, and, and in fact, fifty, twelve years ago, when the, when the previous owner um, brought the application forward, um, the plan was to build, um, a bridge connector across the, um, do you remember that? And, um, at the time, DCR didn't want to allow that. And so, um, the applicant couldn't do it, but DCR has changed in time, so that's good. So we'll, um, pursue making that, um, a safe, accessible connection at some point in the future.
How far do you know, what's on this, the gray? That's how far they've built this?
Yeah, mhm. So see the, um, seam, the, um, where it says Batum and a seam right here.
Oh, that, so that was the extent of.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, this is not, does not require subdivision. So we just needed a, a motion to.
I move to endorse this A and R.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to endorse the A and R on Northern Avenue. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, very good. We have, uh, minutes from May twenty-third that Carolyn forwarded to us.
Did I?
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah, you did. You're still busy.
Saw some document where we talked about the meeting process for the new hybrid.
Oh, right, right.
Is that in the minutes?
No, no, that's it.
Well, there was, there were some in the minutes, but then also in the staff memo.
Oh, maybe that's where I saw it.
Yeah.
I, I did not receive minutes.
You didn't.
I don't think I did. I, I was behind the eight ball on that.
Okay, all right.
Says minutes, correct. The agenda says minutes, May twenty-third, but you didn't send them.
I didn't send.
Well, uh, so I'd like to, I like the process that I read. I'm not sure where I read it, and the staff.
And the staff memo.
Is there anything else we need to do to formalize that? Or is, when does that go into effect, I guess, is my question.
Um, so let me just pull that up.
So be, yeah, it'd be good for us just to kind of run through it again, unless you can, can you speak verbally to?
Oh, there's like eight steps or something. The chair retain the prerogative to override the process and allow one minute here and there to people? I mean, to, I mean. It sounds quite authoritarian, doesn't it?
Sure does.
It's authoritarian to a really nice guy.
Can we get a big timer clock?
Yep.
Well, the city council has a, um, Zoom timer. I mean, they use, it's not theirs, like, it's a digital thing they use.
On the screen, on the Zoom screen.
Yeah. Um, so.
Music, like to wrap it up.
So based on the discussions last time.
It's louder and.
Um, you know, you, there was discussion about sort of, um, helping members of the public understand what the public hearing process is and, um, that, um, you know, taking comment is about listening to issues and that it's not, and David, you've mentioned this before. It's not about, it's not a vote about how many people, you know, like or dislike a project, but you're looking at the issues. Um, and reminding folks that there's no need to repeat comments again in that same vein. Um, and that written or spoken comments have the same weight. And, um, so the idea would be to advertise that the meeting is an in-person meeting with a Zoom option, but clarifying that if there's some technical difficulty, that the meeting will carry on and that, um, even if Zoom can't be used for whatever reason, that, um, the meeting still happens and that there has to be a quorum of, uh, board members in person, but board members who can't participate in person could participate remotely, so long as there's still a quorum in person. Um, and.
Something you said about having Zoom, but if it Zoom fails, we still go on. Is that in keeping with open meeting law guidelines from COVID and everything or whatever, like? That won't raise an open meeting law violation?
So as long as it's advertised, um, and I will confirm with the city solicitor, but as long as it's advertised as in person, because you could go completely in person with no Zoom.
Right.
You don't have to have a Zoom. So as long as it's clear that the meeting, the official meeting is in person and there'll be a Zoom option, um, for people. But if they're concerned about getting their comments in, they need to email them in or mail them in.
Is this, is this a, like, something we should write on the posted agenda too? Yeah.
Well, it's kind of like before the Zoom, like people, they were on NCTV, YouTube streaming or whatever, right? Like, school committee or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're just saying that if, uh, if a planning board member cannot make it, but wants to participate in the meeting, they can be a Zoom and they can contribute to the discussion. They can also vote on motions. Right?
Yeah, vote on motions, but again, the quorum would be in person.
So if Zoom goes down, you still have a quorum, like you don't.
Exactly.
Member, because.
Exactly.
Technical difficulties, then you lose the quorum.
Right. Right.
We talked about, uh, right, and even the presenters need to be here in person. That's why we ex-nayed this.
Sorry, Charles.
Today. Yeah. And then no, uh, and we wouldn't have people out in Zoom as a, as a commenter, do any presentations, share screen.
Right.
Do it that way.
So do we have the ability to mute and unmute people? Okay, that's good.
Um, and then you talked about taking the, like you did, like you've been doing all along is in-person comments first and then, um, Zoom comments or chat. Um.
Is it, is it comments or chat? Are we doing?
Well, oral, yeah, on Zoom is what you, you all.
Gonna go to that? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the big change.
Mm-hmm.
We're going oral. Um, will we still need to look at the chat if people provide comments by chat and oral?
Well, it depends on what you want to do. Do you want to just do one and not the other?
I think we should just do one.
Okay.
And not you.
So no chat?
I'd say that'd get a little confusing for us to kind of.
You just disable the chat?
Yeah, we can disable it, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Or can we put a note in there? Cause some people want this, the chat to be like, I can't, if there's a technical issue. But like, it's not just like a caveat that no comments in the chat are not comments, there is.
I think that when chat is disabled, you can still send messages to the host.
Maybe it's not everyone.
Think. So if there were a technical issue like that, then somebody theoretically, I think, should still be able to message.
I thought when you held up something to your camera.
Help.
Um, Carolyn, then we talked a little bit about a time limit. So today we asked people to speak no more than two minutes. That seemed to work pretty well. We didn't have to send it. So we went back and forth about whether the Zoom participants should also have two minutes or just one minute. One minute seems kind of short to me and we're really setting us, setting them up as us versus them, kinda, you know?
It's too short. People don't get to the.
Yeah.
In one minute.
I feel like we'll just end up in a bunch of.
Back and forth, your minute.
Association, yeah, yeah.
They're just, yeah, so.
Two or three seems fine.
I, I would prefer, unless it becomes a real issue, that the room is too full of people to allow everyone, kind of whatever we decide for the public here in person, we should pretty much do for the Zoom.
Maybe there should be a pool of minutes that gets divided by the number of people that will speak.
Yes.
So if there's three people.
Like, I'm good with.
Speak for twenty-five minutes.
Public, well, there's some people who could do that, for sure.
You get one point eight percent of the minutes.
That's right.
Um. I think that was all of it.
So George, you're saying not to, not to put in a permanent restriction on Zoom comments, that it will be meeting by meeting. And so like today, if you, since you put a restriction on in person, then it would be the same for Zoom. But if I hadn't put a restriction on in person, then there also wouldn't be a restriction.
I think so. And I think the chair will pretty much say, okay, we're opening up public comment. Um, we ask you to speak no more than two or three minutes, two if there's a lot of people, three if there's hardly anybody, but give them some kind of guideline. We don't want somebody up there for seven, eight, ten minutes.
The open meeting law doesn't say you have to have a rule. It's just the chair has to be reasonable.
Right.
To whatever's happening, yeah.
And, and we want to give the people on Zoom, afford them the same time limit as the in-person people. Okay. You should get some sort of benefit. I listen harder if you're in person, personally.
I, I'm all of that. I mean, I do, we're gonna open it up. I just. Our society needs to get back to being, you know, without it being.
The only other thing we talked about is we would check in on this after six months and see if it's working okay. Could you send that email to me or put it on your calendar?
Yeah. I'll do it right now.
Schedule.
Um, what I don't understand, I know you're busy codified, is why we have every committee and commission has a different set of protocols. Why hasn't the city kind of said, we're gonna standardize this a little bit? Cause the zoning board, they don't meet in person at all. The, uh, the CPA, CPC, they don't meet in person. It's, it's, it's.
And, and some of them have gone back and forth.
Yeah. But I guess that would be a city council or a mayoral thing. It just seems to be confusing for the residents.
There's so many committees that are somewhat casual compared to like city council. Like, I think it would be a huge burden for, I don't know, you know all the committees more than I do, but like, for them to follow what city council, like for there to be one rule for all of them would be a burden.
And also, city council is so different than most of the other ones.
No, and, and I think they're an outlier, really. City council's an outlier, but all these other boards, historical commissions, the planning board, the CPC, I'm surprised that we're not all doing, all doing hybrid in some format or all doing in person or all doing just online. It's confusing. But that's just my, my editorial comment.
This is some, something related to today's, like this delay that we're having. We, we knew we were gonna, that this was not gonna happen, that we weren't gonna vote today on this, this meeting. Is there a way, like, given the fact that we knew that that was gonna happen and we're not gonna send out more postcards? Like of all, like, I, I think that there's, there's something a little confused about, about that, like, you know, you know, I'm, I'm not. If they, I mean, my postcard just got thrown in the junk, but like, but like, the, the point is like, I, I think that, uh, and I'm not even a better, I don't think, but technically, um, but. The.
Check that?
Yeah, but your, Alice is more than.
Yes.
Like eight hundred feet.
Yeah.
So Sammy, you're saying we certainly have held tonight's meeting?
I'm just wondering if we need to have, if we're gonna do something where we know we're going to have a, we're not gonna vote on it. If in that situation, we need to send out another postcard. It's different when, when it's like, oh, actually, we need to wait, we, it's just twelve o'clock, we haven't made a choice. Life happens, we need to now move to the next meeting. But in this situation, we knew from the get-go that we were not gonna vote. Like, this was the equivalent of like, uh, what is the meeting that happens like on Tuesday? This is like the, the tech, this was like a tech review.
Well, I, I mean, I would argue that this, um, we didn't know, uh, at the beginning of the week, I wasn't sure if the plans were gonna come in on time.
Okay.
And DPW would certainly do the best they could. The plans didn't come in, but there's also with a project of this size, I think people want to talk about what their concerns are. And so I, I think it, it's not necessarily going to be the same answer for each project. But, um, I think it makes sense to go ahead and voice those concerns and get them out so that we, in that continuation, the applicant can work on modifications, like where that fire pit is gonna be or whatever.
Sense the world. I'm not, not arguing about that.
But, but we don't, we're not required legally to send out a new postcard and that money that ca, it costs to send out the postcard, we could just send to the schools instead.
Cause sometimes. For the, or they can pay for it.
What's that?
Well, I mean.
That's not.
Using the system to like try to trick people to not come, like.
No, I knew that.
Like, and I think most people, we, we send the postcards out, cause open meeting law says we have to send postcards. So I don't see why we should be sending more postcards than what open meeting law requires, because most people are doing what you did.
Yeah, no, right.
With their postcards, you know, they put them in.
Right. Sometimes we don't have a quorum, or sometimes the applicant doesn't show up.
Yeah.
And we continue it and he, like, people who are interested came to the meeting, because they know that's when it is and they're here and they hear the new date and the new time and. That's their.
But I'm in this position as an applicant, I would never come. I would just say, let's, I would continue it. I wouldn't waste my time coming to a meeting that I know I'm not gonna get.
Yeah.
So, but that's up to them. It wastes their time more than anyone.
You're right.
And there are instances where I think that it makes sense, like we knew a little bit ahead of time that just wasn't gonna be ready. You know, we'd say, you know what? Let's not waste anybody's time at all. We'll just, you need to, but the board would still have to come and vote to continue it, because that's the official notice.
Sometimes that's happened and we've had a room full of the neighborhood here and they're looking out for the applicant and we've got to say, whoops.
I'm not sure I've seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's all of our administrative chores tonight.
Who was recording us from the front row?
Um, that was, um, Adam Cohen.
He lives on North Street.
Yeah. Okay, so just send. Someone in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Toast, uh, is that a motion?
Typically, it would be appropriate to say, hey, I want to record this, but.
Would done my hair. Uh, I moved to adjourn the meeting. Is that what you're asking?
I second.
Motion's been made by David Whitehill, seconded by Jenna White, to adjourn the meeting at nine twelve PM this Thursday. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aight.